Call to order with all members present. I'm going to ask Commissioner Darlene Love to please do the invocation tonight. And we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our city clerk, Dr. Paul Jimenez. Everyone, please stand, please.
May we bow our head? As we lift our eyes unto the hills and when it's coming to our help, help us in these times of difficulties and heartbreaks. Be with this council tonight. Whatever things that may be done, be with them in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is called to order with all members present, with the exception of Councilmember Hadar Awad, who may be joining us shortly. Councilmember Valentine has a presentation on the agenda tonight. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd like to present Ms. Donzalay Abernathy, who is going to do a Black History Month presentation. Ms. Abernathy is the daughter of famed civil rights leader Ralph David Abernathy. She is an accomplished actress, she is a historian, and a public speaker, and we will get into more of her background a little bit later in the program. At this point, I would like to present Ms. Donzalay Abernathy. Welcome to Hawthorne.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, and thank you all so much for the honor to be here. It's a big deal to me. So I'm just gonna speak very briefly about the Selma movement and the right to vote. And what's so beautiful here is to see that there is a diverse group of people here. Well, in 1965, in the South, the majority of the people in this room would not have the right to vote because we were not Caucasian. Basically, only white people had the right to vote in the South. If you were to attempt to vote, they would ask you to recite passages from the Constitution, the Declaration of Independence. They might also ask you, according to John Lewis and to my dad, how many bubbles are there in a bottle of bubble bath? So it was up to each individual person. The goal was to stop people from having the right to vote. On the photograph that you see right there, that's Jose Williams in the dark overcoat, and the man in the light overcoat is Congressman John Lewis, who was a member of the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee. And on this March 7th, a Sunday morning in 1965, I remember vividly when Jose Williams called my dad, Ralph David Abernathy, at our church. And what happened was, my father and Uncle Mauden, Martin Luther King Jr., whom I knew as Uncle Mauden, who was my godfather, you know, Uncle Mauden said, "We're gonna march in Selma." Well, this was leading up to Easter. And so what happened was, my dad didn't have anybody who would be in the pulpit at our church, which was West Hunter Street Baptist Church. So my dad said, "I can't be there." So what happened was, Uncle Mauden said, "Well, if you're not gonna be there, Ralph, I'm not gonna be there. I'm not gonna march. We're not gonna do the march." But the people showed up at Brown Chapel anyway, which was a church in Selma. And the reason people showed up on this Sunday was, we had endured 244 years of slavery and 100 years of Jim Crow segregation. That was 344 years, being told that we were less than because our skin was not white. So Jose Williams called. He said, "All these people are here. Can we march?" So my dad called Uncle Mauden at his church, at Ebenezer Baptist Church, and Uncle Mauden said, "No, I don't think we need to let Jose march." Well, what happened was, daddy said, "If we don't let Jose march, he'll be mad at us for the rest of our lives. We gotta let him march." Well, on that particular day, Congressman John Lewis, who was just John Lewis of the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, they were angry that the Uncle Mauden and the Southern Christian Leadership Conference was in Selma, and they had been in Selma since 1963. And granted, they hadn't made any achievements, so they didn't want Martin Luther King to be there with Ralph David Abernathy. But John Lewis wanted to work with them, and they're like, "You know what, John? You're fired. We don't want you." So John says to Jose Williams, "I'll march with you by myself, because it's the right thing to do." And of course, John Lewis marched his way on into history. And the rest of the people who judged him that day are forgettable names that nobody knows. Anyway, so that's that morning. So daddy told Jose you could march. So they started across the Edmund Pettus Bridge. And it was just a march where they would then go, and the goal was to walk to the Capitol, but to make a point that we needed the right to vote. As they got across the bridge, they were met by policemen on horseback with gas masks, tear gas, and they beat them unmercifully with their nightsticks. That's Congressman John Lewis there on the ground. And there you can see the police officer with the stick, you know, the nightstick where he's gonna beat, to beat him. The message was to tell black people, Asian people, Latino people, you have no right to vote in the United States of America. So the great thing was, we had a wonderful president named Lyndon Baines Johnson. So President Johnson said, "Come to the White House," because I'll never forget that particular Sunday. We went to dinner at Pascal's Restaurant. Daddy and Uncle Mauden were grace-stricken because it was broadcast on the news, all of the violence that had happened that day. And so they sent their staff in, and their staff went in to survey the situation because they needed to see firsthand what had happened. But President Johnson said, "Come to the White House and meet." And so that's my dad on the end, that's my mother in the black dress, and that's Uncle Mauden, and Congressman Walter Fontroy next to them looking down on the ground. The man in the light suit worked for Congressman Walter Fontroy. Behind the young black man is Bernard Lee, who was their traveling companion. And then the heavyset man is Reverend Fred Bennett, who worked for Uncle Mauden and did things around the house. Anyway, so they all went to Washington to meet with President Johnson. And that's them in the Oval Office as they discussed the creation of the Voting Rights Act. And unlike, which is depicted in that movie Selma, if you ever get a chance to see that movie Selma, they depict President Johnson incorrectly. Because he was a great man, President Johnson. He was a very liberal man, President Johnson, and he thought, "If John Fitzgerald Kennedy would do this much for people of color, I'm gonna do even more." So he had them come. I have this photograph because President Johnson's daughter, Lucy Baines Johnson, gave me this picture. She said that, "You know, they always show Martin Luther King alone in the White House with President Johnson, but it wasn't that way. Your father was always there. And I'm sending you this picture so that you will see, and you will be able to show people." Because history is written by those who are the survivors, and therefore I have to tell the correct history. Anyway, that's President Johnson, that's Uncle Mauden, that's my dad, Ralph Abernathy in the middle, and Congressman Walter Fontroy. And you couldn't get to the president unless you went through a congressman, especially back then as people of color. Anyway, they decided that they were gonna have this creation of the Voting Rights Act. And the president said, "Listen, what I need you all to do is take the people and do everything you can to bring attention to it. Sheriff Jim Clark, his violence, bring attention to it. And then we will raise the social consciousness of America, and white people in America will realize how important the right to vote is for you." And Lucy Baines Johnson said that her father grabbed Senator Dick Dirksen by his shirt collar and his jacket and yanked him up because LBJ was a big guy. And he said, "You are gonna sign that Voting Rights Act into law." That's what happens when you have a powerful president who is morally right and wanted to help the people of the United States of America. Anyway, that's them leaving the West Wing of the Oval Office. My mother, Uncle Mauden, my dad, Bernard. Anyway, right after that, they had a press conference, and there's John Lewis, who's with them in the press conference. And then the guests, the people from the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, were thinking, "Oh, my God, we made a mistake about John Lewis." Anyway, there they are praying, and they had several little marches along that route. And Colin Kaepernick is not the first person to take a knee. That's what we did all the time back then. We got down on our knees and we prayed, and we weren't trying to be disrespectful to the flag, we weren't trying to be disrespectful to the nation. We were trying to bring attention to the plight of people of color in the United States of America. That's my favorite photograph, because daddy is praying and Uncle Mauden is on his knees with Reverend Reese. Anyway, so they had a second attempt. That's John Lewis, Reverend Jesse L. Douglas, Uncle Mauden, and then James Foreman from the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, who then came and decided to join them and their daddy. And that's the thing, you had all these different organizations, and they all had their different agendas. And the important role that my father had was to bring everybody together, because united we stand, divided we fall. And here they are, just with their arms crossed. And then the white children came down from the north, and the white ministers and the clergymen, and we were all in this together, and it's beautiful. You get a chance to see, this is the official second attempt to cross the Edmund Pettus Bridge. And you can see the people, and they're waving the American flags because we're proud to be American citizens. "We wanted America to stand up to the principles upon which this nation was founded, with freedom, liberty, and justice for all, not for some." And as they got ready to cross the bridge, they were met by police officers. Jim Clark and Al Lingo had all of the Alabama National Guard to meet them. So what they then did is got down on their knees and prayed. And these are the opposition that they were met with. They got down on their knees and prayed. When they got down on their knees and prayed, they turned around and they walked back. Well, on that particular night, one of the white ministers, well, there were actually three white ministers, Reverend James Reeve from Massachusetts, and two other white ministers went into a soul food restaurant to eat, because you know, black food and soul food is really good. And so they were having a wonderful meal, and when they left the soul food restaurant, the members of the Ku Klux Klan saw three white men leaving a black restaurant. Well, it was the days of segregation. So what they did was, they beat them unmercifully, and Reverend James Reeve died. So this is the wreath that Martin Luther King and my father are placing in honor of Reverend James Reeve, which was absolutely horrific. And that's the wreath, and that's the Greek Orthodox priest whose name I can't pronounce. Anyway, this is just daddy and Uncle Mauden together. And so now, this is the third attempt. And so what happened was, Lyndon Baines Johnson said, "I will send in the National Guard to protect you, to take you safely all the way to the Alabama State Capitol." And that's Rabbi Abraham Heschel, because Jewish people were intricately involved in the civil rights movement, always, because they understood oppression. They had lost millions of Jewish people during World War II, and they did not want the same thing to happen in the civil rights movement. And then beside them is Ralph Bunch, and that's Uncle Mauden, that's my dad, that's a woman, a Catholic nun, on the front, and Congressman John Lewis again. And the Hawaiian delegation gave us the lays, because you know, Hawaii is a state where Barack Obama was born. And so they gave us these beautiful lays. And that's the overview of them marching. And the woman up in the middle with the lei around her neck at the top of the screen is Constance Baker Motley, who was a judge who worked with Thurgood Marshall on the passage of the major civil rights legislation on the Supreme Court. That's Jim Letherer, a white man who on one leg walked 55 miles from Selma to Montgomery. It was five days, and along that march, they would give us a salt tablet so that we wouldn't have to use the restroom. So how could we be angry at white people? Because you see white people marching with us. There were some really terrible racist white people, but the majority of Americans, white Americans, were loving people who wanted the opportunity to show their love and compassion for the rest of us who are brown or who are non-white. Anyway, Jim Letherer, he's a homeless man now in Chico, California. So when you see a homeless person, don't judge them. Sometimes they've walked and done that thing which gave you your freedom and gave you your rights. Anyway, here they are, the ministers, and all we wanted was the right to vote. There's daddy and Uncle Mauden reading newspaper along that route. And so that's me, that little girl with the striped sweater, and we're walking on the front line. That's my brother Ralph III, who's now gone on to heaven. And in the white sweater is my sister Wandlin, who was so traumatized by the civil rights movement because they called us every morning and every evening and threatened to kill us. And so as little children, we heard that. And so my sister left the United States of America and moved to Germany. And I'm walking so slowly, my mother has her hand in my back because I'm holding up Uncle Mauden, Uncle Reddick, and all the hundreds of marchers that are behind us. And so this minister comes, this priest, and you can see he's sort of dragging me on down the way so that the line could move forward, because we were marching for our freedom. And that's the official photograph, and that's me in the striped sweater. And so once we got into Montgomery, and I don't have much longer to talk, I'm gonna come to an end now. Once we got into Montgomery, the movie stars came. Harry Belafonte brought all of these great singers. There was Tony Bennett, who sang "I Left My Heart in San Francisco." And there was Sammy Davis Jr., who was incredible. There was Peter Paul and Mary. There was Bob Dylan and Joan Baez and Odetta. And they sang all of these absolutely wonderful songs. And as we sat there, and my dad slept, you know, we were just there on the edge of the stage. And so that's me, that little girl in the striped sweater with my hand up to my mouth, because even though I was seven years of age, I knew what was happening. I understood. And little people are just little people. They have a social conscience, they haven't been through the socialization process, and they understand how important it is to serve humanity. That's my sister beside me. And Uncle Mauden is thanking Harry and all the singers and all the movie stars on the stage. So the following morning is the morning of the march, and that's me again with the little accordion rain cap, because it started to rain. And back then, you know, you wanted to assimilate, and so you didn't have Afro. You had your hair straightened, because you wanted to fit in, so that people wouldn't judge you if your natural hair, your beautiful natural hair, was wild and woolly. And that's mother and daddy, and Congressman John Lewis again. And then we started the march because Uncle Mauden was late. He always ran late. And so we started the march, and then we had to stop. But you can see all of the young people that were there. And this is the official photograph, which is the start of the march. And that's Rosa Parks on the end, my dad, my mother, Ralph Bunch, Uncle Mauden, and Uncle Reddick. And the little boy up above Uncle Mauden's head is my brother Ralph III. And I wanted to go up on Clinton DeVos' shoulders as well, but my mother said, "You can't go because you have on a dress." And I was so upset that day, I said, "I'll wear pants and be like a boy from now on." Anyway, here we are. We finally make it to the steps of the Alabama State Capitol, and that's Bayard Rustin, who had come down from the Fellowship of Reconciliation and had introduced the idea of nonviolence. Beside him is A. Philip Randolph, who was the founder and the creator of the March on Washington. And next to him is, of course, Congressman John Lewis, who's suffering right now from pancreatic cancer. Uncle Reddick, Uncle Mauden, and daddy. And George Wallace, George Carli Wallace, who in his inaugural address said, "Segregation now, segregation today, segregation forever," was hiding in the window. Because if you want to take care of a good old boy, you get a bigger, badder good old boy, which is what Lyndon Baines Johnson was. And that's Peter Paul and Mary, Harry Belafonte, Joan Baez, and the singers that day. And that's James Baldwin, the famous writer who they made a documentary about, is like, "I'm not your Negro." And that's my brother trying to convince my father to let him do something, as my dad's focusing on what's ahead. Uncle Mauden is preparing for his great speech. That's their famous photograph that they loved so much of themselves. And this is Uncle Mauden as he got ready to speak. And as he spoke that day, and I stood behind the stage there, he said, "How long? Not long, because no lie will live forever. How long? Not long, because the moral arc of the universe is long, but it bends towards justice. How long? Not long." And my arm was waving as he, you know, said his words, and it was a prolific day. Anyway, at the end of the march, and after everything was over, this white woman right here, Mrs. Viola Greg LaUza, took these young men home. She dropped them off, and the last person who was in her car was Leroy Moulton, the tall, skinny, 19-year-old young man. Well, as they drove down Highway 80, where we had just marched down from Montgomery back to Selma, the Ku Klux Klan saw this white woman with blond hair, with a young black man in the front seat of her car. And that wasn't socially acceptable to those men down in Selma. So they chased her down Highway 80, and back then, cars could go faster. The speeds got up to 100 miles an hour. The FBI informant in the car said, they lagged back, and everybody said, "Get your pistols ready." And the FBI informant said, "He tried to stop them. He was like, 'You all can't do this. You can't do this.'" They said, "Oh, yeah, you're in the big leagues. We're gonna do this now." They pulled up beside Mrs. LaUza, who turned and looked at them because she didn't understand what was happening. They took their pistols and they shot her in the face, and the car went over in the side of the ditch. Leroy Moulton turned off the car, and with her brains and blood all over, he just passed out. The Ku Klux Klan came back to make sure it was a good kill. They got ready to shoot them up again, and the informant said, "Don't do this. Come on, let's stop, let's stop. Somebody's gonna see them. They'll see us." So they got in their truck and they went on down the road. Leroy Moulton awakened, and he walked in the shadows all the way back to Selma, afraid. He called Jose Williams. I was the first person he called. Anyway, Jose said, "Please call the police." And when the police came, they arrested Leroy Moulton and tried to blame Mrs. LaUza's murder on him. Anyway, because Mrs. LaUza was murdered, and her name is not mentioned in these great books where all of these men have won Pulitzer Prizes, they don't call her name, but she gave her life for us to have the right to vote. And she was from Detroit, Michigan. Her husband was a Teamster, and he worked with Jimmy Hoffa. And she had five children, and she said, "I couldn't do anything but drive black people back and forth to the polls. I had to do it because it was morally right. It was the thing to do." And because that, they murdered her in cold blood. Anyway, she gave her lives for us to have the right to vote. And right after that, this is President Lyndon Baines Johnson signing the Voting Rights Act into law, and my father and Uncle Mauden are waiting. So this is a blood ballot. It's the most important thing we can do as American citizens, is to go to the polls and vote. And if you can, go to the polls and work the polls, but it is the most important responsibility that we have as American citizens. And you all know that, because you all are elected. And you all are elected to serve, to represent the people. Represent us well. And thank you so much, Olivia Valentine, for the great honor to stand before you today and just to tell you the road that brought us along and got our freedom. Thank you.
Please don't leave the podium yet. Thank you so much for that riveting glimpse into the history of the Voting Rights Act and how Selma played such a large part. We have a proclamation for you. Don't leave the podium. So I'm going to read it. Please stay up. Don't go. And this is a proclamation honoring Donzalay Abernathy. Whereas Donzalay Abernathy, the daughter of influential civil rights leader Ralph David Abernathy, has been involved in the civil rights movement since she was a child and helped integrate Spring Street Elementary School in Atlanta, Georgia. And whereas she is an accomplished actress, having had many roles in both film and television, known from her recurring roles on the TV series Easy Streets, Commander in Chief, Lincoln Heights, Dangerous Minds, and Amazing Grace, and known for her starring roles in several television movies, Fatal Exposure, Abducted, A Father's Love, Ned Blessing, and Grassroots. And whereas Ms. Abernathy won the Tan Foundation 2012 Artist Award for her work as an actress and for her script Birmingham Sunday, and starred for four years in over 60 episodes as a series regular on Lifetime Television's critically acclaimed dramatic series Any Day Now. And whereas Ms. Abernathy authored the history book Partners to History: Martin Luther King, Ralph David Abernathy, and the Civil Rights Movement, and that it was nominated as one of the best books of 2004 for young adults by the American Library Association. And whereas Ms. Abernathy is a founding member of the Board of Trustees of the New Visions Foundation, which created New Roads Schools and several other schools in the Los Angeles area. And whereas, as a public speaker, she has spoken at the Judicial Division of the American Bar Association, the National Association of Women Judges, Harvard Law School, Pepperdine University, and Morgan State University, and has been profiled in the books Fearless Women and No Mountain High Enough: Secrets of Successful African-American Women. Now, therefore, the Hawthorne City Council formally does hereby acknowledge and pay tribute to her years of dedication, achievements, and community and civic service proclaimed this 25th day of February 2020, and it's signed by Mayor Alex Vargas, Mayor Pro Tem Alex Montero, Councilmember Hadar Awad, Councilmember Mike Toledo, and Councilmember Olivia Valentine. Thank you. Thank you for that riveting, absolutely riveting description of the civil rights movement and how Selma played the part that it did. So do any of you have any comments? And then I'd like to have us all take a picture with her.
Through the chair. Thank you, Ms. Abernathy.
Thank you.
And thank you, once again, you know, for keep this Voting Rights Act alive, right, to show the history. Because as we know as we speak, today, we have laws that's been passing in different states prohibiting people still to vote. So thank you for keep this alive, because all of us, we have to continue to advocate for the right to vote. Because your dad and Dr. Martin Luther King and so many fought for this right, that we have to do it. And that's what we have to tell our children, our grandchildren, and continue this legacy of freedom, that we need to vote is our right, is a human right, and all of us have that right to cast a vote. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was beautiful, and I really enjoyed watching that because I've seen so many documentaries on the civil rights and what you said about President Johnson, I thought was true, that he got a little bit of a bum rap, and he was really, really the one that propelled it forward. And I don't think he ever really got the credit for it. And I think that, you know, listening to you is like listening to history, because you don't get an opportunity to talk to people or hear from people that were actually there, even though you were a young girl, but you witnessed something that went on to be American history. I remember I was at Washington DC and I saw the monument to Martin Luther King, and I thought, "Wow, this is really great, that they elevated this man to that position." Because if it wasn't for him, things would have worked out a lot different. You know, he's in that same, he's looked at like Nelson Mandela, people that could have pushed violence instead, they didn't. And we have a different country today because we didn't go that route. And you had to really swallow a lot. I know that I had to swallow razor blades, but it didn't go that route. So it was really, I really enjoyed your presentation. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Abernathy, I wanted to also thank you for coming out today and giving us that wonderful background and history on the civil rights movement, especially on Selma and how integral that played a part in getting the rights to vote to everyone here, especially to the African-American community. And what was really astounding about your presentation, because we're living in such a fast-paced world, we never take the time to truly look back, especially now, and re-look at history's events and see where we came from and give credit to those that took a chance and put their lives on the line to fight for something that at the meantime didn't look feasible. And from your father and Dr. Martin Luther King and being at such a young age around that and continuing to push, I meet people now that can barely handle getting criticism from their neighboring friend or from their own neighbors. But you were able to... But you were able to go through that and come out strong and stronger from it, and you're still advocating for those rights and you're still pushing. And when Councilwoman Valentine went into your descriptive background, you're acting and writing and public speaking. It's, it's, it's an energy and fuel that, that gets me more excited about being in public office again and really pushing that message of we're all the same person. We all put our feet in our, our foot through our pants, one leg at a time, and for us to combat and attack each other on issues that are essentially irrelevant when you look at the bigger picture. And that's something your father and Dr. Martin Luther King looked at. They looked at the bigger picture of the entire thing. I actually want to applaud you. What you've done as a, as a, as a young child is, is a lot more than what most of us do in a lifetime. So I wanted to give you credit and as well as your father for putting yourselves and your family in that, in that kind of turmoil and that fight. That's not easy. It really isn't. Yeah, I almost started tearing up watching you cry, but yeah, I just want to thank you for coming out today and, and really driving that message.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am, I want to also thank you for being here to, it's history, making history alive, you know, bring it to life. About ten years ago, I took a trip to a conference down in Atlanta, and I took the opportunity to go with one of my brothers through the different civil rights sites. And we ended up between, you know, Birmingham, we went to Alabama in particular because we knew that that was the core of like what happened back then. Driving through, driving from Montgomery to Birmingham, between Montgomery and Birmingham, and then going off to the side to Selma and getting off, having that picture of the Edmund Pettus Bridge and actually crossing and walking and just kind of just trying to recreate, like see how it might have felt. I can only imagine how it felt coming down off of the, off of the bridge and encountering all those police officers. So it must have been terrible. So, and then going to the courthouse that still exists there, at Selma, where they turned back the African-American voters and prohibited them from voting. There's some footage of that, that you see them like not letting them come in and register. Then going over to the State House in Montgomery, which is the Capitol, right? And just imagining the throngs of people and people saying, hey, you're not gonna vote, or people peeking from the windows. So history, make, you make history alive. The efforts of your father with Martin Luther King Jr. are immense, and great strides have been taken forward. That's why a lot of, some of our residents here, our African-American residents from our Holly Park neighborhood, many of them come from the, moved here from the South and made Hawthorne their home. And it's sometimes, we, we need, we need to remind the youth of today that there was a lot of struggles that were made for these new generations and that the responsibility is to be good model citizens, right? And then also to partake in the voting process. And unfortunately, there's still work to do when it comes to reminding them about that. And we, the opportunities have been opened up, and many people have struggled and have been affected by it. Again, and then they're still taking strides forward, but then we still encounter economic segregation. Segregation in what form? Maybe not neighborhood-wise, but segregation economically, so class division maybe also. So, but the impetus, the momentum was created by the efforts of your father, Martin Luther King, and all those who were partaking in the civil rights movement. And, I mean, our responsibility as elected officials, like some of my colleagues said, is to be good model leaders, you know, for the community and making sure that we do what we can through our city clerk and everybody up here, making sure that everybody comes out and partakes in the voting process. Lives were lost for that. People died for that. So now it's our, now it's our turn, these new generations, to make sure that we just make sure that it was not in vain. But thank you so much, ma'am. We love you. We see you here. Every year, it's like you have a new set of pictures that you introduce to us. So it's good to see that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, come forward. We're going to take a picture with you.
Yeah, that's a big, it's a big deal.
It's not easy.
Okay, we're ready for the next part. Okay. Councilmember Awad has a presentation. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I think we have Elena from New Star Family Justice Center to kind of give an update on where they have been with, with their new facility and some of their services they're providing for DV families and victims of that sort. After you.
Good evening, Mayor Vargas, council members. Thank you so much for giving us a little bit of time to just give you an update. I'm still looking for an opportunity to come here one evening and just give a more full presentation of all the services that we offer here at center. So my name is Elena Meloni. I serve as the Executive Director of the New Star Family Justice Center. We are a domestic violence agency with a very special model where, where we work with community partners, and those partnerships actually have a place under our roof. So that, the idea is that when a client comes through the door, all the services that they need are right there on site, so, and they're all accessible and they're all free. That's the main concept of a family justice center. So I, we moved here about maybe three months ago, and that was possible through a grant that we received from the Governor's Office of the Emergency, Emergency, I'm sorry, of the Emergency Center there in Sacramento. There are twenty-one family justice centers in California. We're one of the recipients of this grant. And it allowed us to move to the larger facilities where we are now, where we can accommodate community agencies, you know, to deliver those services. So we, we've had some, some build-outs and some decoration. As some of you are aware, we moved at a place where there used to be a church, and so we had to do kind of a little renovation inside. But we're all ready to go, and this coming Friday, we'll be holding a, an open house. I did invite everyone by email, but I discovered that some of the emails online were not correct. So I ended up having to call the city and make sure that I had all their correct emails. So I'm here to invite all of you to the open house. It's going to be two to four this Friday, and you'll get to see, you know, exactly what we do and, and that stuff. So I also want to mention that one of my greatest goal has always been to work with the, with the law enforcement and with the Hawthorne Police Department. We've been here in Hawthorne for ten years now, and we quietly been serving a lot of clients. And, but we want to have a, a more, a deeper relationship with the department, with the law enforcement, because they are the first responders. And what happens at that time makes all the difference in that person's case, in the victim's case. I'll give you just a quick example. So I have recently met Chief Ishi, so, and I've expressed the desire to work together. About two weeks ago, officer did come to our, to our, to our door and asked us if we could help on a case, and we did. And although we don't disclose any information, anything like that, I just want to give you a couple of things that we've done, just to give you an example of what we do and how we are different from other agencies and from, from what you may know domestic violence agencies do. So we met up at the location where the incident had taken place. We worked with the victim. We calmed her down. We listened to her story, not judgmental whatsoever. We waited around. We did not, we were not in a hurry. That is her time or his time. Then, as we were talking, you know, the victim realized that she really needed to, she really needed to, she was not safe. So we suggested to her that she should do a restraining order. And we asked her, could you please come to our office? We will help you with that. She did not have a car seat, so I sent one of my staff people to come over, and we gave her a car seat. Keep it. Her sister showed up and then, so they came to the office. We spent about an hour and a half, and we helped to draft a restraining order. It was too late to have it served that evening. She had to go with her sister. They live kind of far. Then the next day, I received a call, because as you know, whenever there are children involved in these cases, the Department of Child and Family Services get called. So she was called to go to Children's Court the next day and did not have any transportation. We're talking about all the way from San Bernardino to LA. So we hired a driver to take her, wait for her, and then take her back to San Bernardino. And that is not usually what most organizations do. But we wanted to make sure she wouldn't miss that. That was a critical meeting. If she didn't show up, the child may actually end up in foster care, so we don't want that. I, so now she has finally filed a restraining order. We are continuing to work with her. The idea is that we don't want her to be in that situation again. The victim is quite young, so what we want to do is we want to help her with life skills, maybe go back to school, maybe even go to a shelter program for a while, just to connect with lots of more resources. And we will stay with her as long as she wants to stay with us. So that's, that's what we do. That's we, we try to rebuild lives. So that's just a little bit of, you know, an insight. But if you come, if you come to our open house this Friday, you'll see where all the things take place. You'll see the different rooms. I have all these docents just ready to, you know, show off the little thing that they learned. And so I'm looking forward for a long-term relationship with the city. It's, I spend more time in Hawthorne than I spend where I live. I work almost six days a week, almost every week, and I truly enjoy it. I love the people, love the stores here, by the way. I love shopping here. So there you go. And I want to introduce you, I brought a staff member with me tonight, so you will get to know all of our staff members. And her name is Alejandra Contreras, and she'll talk for a couple of minutes.
Hi, my name is Alejandra Contreras. So just as she had mentioned, so I'm part of the staff. I'm actually new, so I just started about two months ago. So one thing that I found really interesting about this agency was the whole concept of helping domestic violence victims. I've worked with FSPs, it was a full-service partnership, working with chronically homeless, with mental illness, substance abuse. I've worked with LGBT in transitional housing, and I saw like a pattern of the need for assistance in domestic violence. In the South Bay, I realized that there's not a lot of programs that offer that, especially all-in-one roof. So it's, it's a really good concept because when a person's experiencing domestic violence, instead of having to go through different locations and having to repeat the story over and over again, they can just do it all in one place, and all the support is there. So I am an outreach coordinator, so I am working with the community members to try to just spread the word, just bring an awareness of what we're doing, and also an advocate. So just as Elena had mentioned, we're trying to get partnerships with the police department. So whenever they do get the calls of, like, an incident happening, I can go there on call and try to speak to the, to the victim, provide them our services, and try to connect them and bring them to our office, so they can feel more comfortable. But I look forward to seeing you all and meeting you. Thank you.
Would there be any questions?
Through the chair. Good evening. Thank you so much, Elena, for joining us this evening and for bringing that information about New Star Family Justice Center. I've been aware of your center for several years. And I fully support it. I think it's a wonderful service to the community, and I will try very hard to come on Friday. I did not get the email, so it may be that. It may be that my, my email address is outdated on the website. That's entirely possible.
I think so, yeah.
But in any case, I will, I will make every effort to go, but I need to get your exact address, because I know you moved recently.
Yes, you know, I have just a couple of flyers with me because we gave them all out for today, and, and so they'll be there. It is 12929 Hawthorne Boulevard. That's the address. We will be parking in the back on that day because there's plenty of parking there and a lot of people will be coming. I'll just leave a couple and with you and, yeah, that's all we have for now, right? Yeah, okay. So I will leave them right here.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Thank you, Ms. Meloni, for coming in, Alejandra. Probably, maybe in a couple of weeks, I'll go visit your center, but on Friday, I have to be in Buena Park for a conference, so I'm not going to be able to attend, but I'll, I would love to go see the center maybe in a couple of weeks, okay? I'll give you a call. I'll send you an email. So thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the guy, sorry. Yeah, Mr. Clerk, can you please read the guidelines for oral communications?
During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the, on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Is this the only one?
Yes.
Okay. Gordon Michael Migo, please.
Gordon Michael Migo, native resident of Hawthorne since October the eighth, nineteen fifty-two. The Sentinel Valley Union High School District, or CBU HSD, is seeking once again to increase taxes upon the people of Hawthorne and other cities. CBU HSD has placed on the March third election ballot Measure SP, a hundred twenty-five million-dollar bond, which will cost two hundred sixty-four million dollars, including interest payments, as shown in the booklet. Voters were assured that previous bonds and a parcel tax would be more than sufficient to upgrade school facilities, provide more student resources, and so on. In two thousand, a fifty-nine million dollar bond. In two thousand eight and two thousand ten, two ninety-eight million dollar bonds. And in two thousand sixteen, a hundred ten million dollar bond were approved. With approximately three hundred sixty-seven million dollars in interest payments, it will cost taxpayers seven hundred and thirty-two million dollars. When the two thousand twelve parcel tax of approximately a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars, that's based on fourteen million dollars a year for the next twelve years, that's from two thousand twelve, or thirteen to twenty twenty-five, the overall cost will amount to nine hundred million dollars. We, the people, are greatly affected by the ever-increasing cost of living, who find it difficult, even impossible, to own a home, to rent an apartment, to operate a business. The lack of affordability is contributing to the homeless crisis and store closures. In two thousand nineteen, the people of Los Angeles rejected LA Unified School District's Measure EE, which would have increased taxes on homes, apartments, businesses, and so on. Similarly, the people of Hawthorne must reject Sentinel Valley Union High School District's Measure SP. Measure SP, that sends a clear message demanding responsible use of existing money. Vote no on Measure SP. And cannot stress this enough, that Sentinel Valley needs to understand that money does not, as they say, grow on trees. People are hurting very badly, and they need to consider that people are living paycheck to paycheck, and people are losing their homes, being pushed out of their apartments and all, like I said, so we need to reject this resoundingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the City Council?
To the chair.
Anybody wishing to address the City Council, please form a line. Form a line now, please.
Do I just start?
Yes, you can start now.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Taylor. I have been a Hawthorne resident since 2007. I am wanting to speak about the short-term rental, things that are on the agenda. Just to give you a little bit of background, I have been a vacation rental host for 15 years. I have a property in Cape Cod, as well as some in the desert. I have rented out my home while we stay in our second place of residence in South Orange County. And I wanted to just share some of my expertise with the council that may not have been brought to your attention, or things that could maybe, I think the ordinance that you guys have put together, I don't know if that's the right word, but it's well thought out, I can see what you guys are trying to do, I think it's very well done. There's a couple of topics that I do want to bring to your attention, the first one being the limit of 90 days on the vacation rentals, as it is defined. As a professional host, I feel like what the, the city is going to end up doing, and why I think that's a mistake, is because it is going to eliminate professional hosts like myself, and, and who we do want to bring in, if we are going to allow short-term rentals at all, is we really want responsible professional hosts who know what they're doing, who have an infrastructure in place. One of the ways that I vet guests, to make sure that, that I'm respectful to my neighbors and my home, is I have a minimum age requirement, I have a vacation lease that everybody has to sign, and that has, that has served me quite well in the way of RIFRAF, or people who I wouldn't want to rent my home, who end up not wanting to rent it once they see the vacation rental lease. These are just some certain things that, that professional hosts do, that if you are only catering to the short-term rental people who might want to rent out a room, or do, you know, just side things for extra income, is you're going to end up with inexperienced hosts, who are going to make the rookie mistakes, who aren't going to have rental leases. And, and so I encourage the city of Hawthorne to, when you are vetting your, your hosts, or people that are, that are looking for the permits, that you actually vet the hosts, and ask them to show that they have some sort of process in place to vet their guests. The other thing that I would recommend, instead of limiting it to 90 days for vacation rental people, which is ultimately just going to eliminate the professional hosts in Hawthorne, is to instead limit the number of permits that you give out for vacation rentals, so have a maximum number of, of permits that you give out, and have a limited, limit it to, say, one vacation rental per radius, so that you end up with a well, I'm not using my words "well," because I'm nervous, but, so that, that you're not overrunning neighborhoods with the vacation rentals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Sir, welcome.
Hello. My name is Eugene Tate, First Honorable Mayor, Councilman. I've been, my name is Eugene Tate, as I say. I've been here, a resident of Hawthorne, for 21 years. I live on Gale, not too far from Eucalyptus Park. And I've grown to really love this place. I really love Hawthorne. Every Tuesday and Wednesday, when, before the, the street sweeper comes, I get out there, and I sweep along the curb all the way to 123rd, all the way from my place to, like Inglewood, I guess it would be. And, I'm just nervous, yeah. And the park there is beginning to gather homeless people. And at first, it didn't really bother me, but then I see more and more stuff gathering. And I came down, and the Honorable Councilman went down with me, and he, he observed, I really, I didn't expect that. I mean, I'm quite honored, you know? And he went down there, and he actually looked at the problem. And I just wish, I feel kind of heartless to a certain extent, but if there could be, is there a place where it could be opened up to the homeless, where they, they could go? Because it gets quite cold out there, and I mean, and then I, I see that eventually it's just going to become a magnet. And this is a place where my, my sons, who's in the Air National Guard, working on their F-15, I have one working on their F-15, my dad, he saw the flag being raised at Iwo Jima, and then I have a son, this, this recently, he's in the Army National Guard, and he's going to media school. And I just hope that something could come about, that we could confront this problem, you know? Because I, like I say, I was, I worked for Los Angeles Water and Power, and I retired 31 years, and I feel that I do owe this community. That's why I get out every morning and sweep, you know? I try to do my part. I thank you very much for listening to me.
Our chief and city manager, our homeless task force, if you could have them focus on Eucalyptus?
Yes, yes. Sure.
Well, you know, thanks, Eugene, I appreciate you coming out here. Now, this is where everything happens, so come back and tell us, and talk to us every now and then.
Yes.
We need, we need feedback from people, you know, otherwise we don't know. The, I, I heard once that if the park goes, the neighborhood goes. And so, this is an opportunity to nip it in the bud. I went over there, right, Eucalyptus Park, where they have the sink and all that, there's a guy sleeping there. So, you know, it's, it's already starting to, to take, so, somebody's got to go over there and kind of, you know, ask them to go some, move, move down, I don't know what to do, but they, they do.
Okay. Our homeless task force will take care of it, they'll, they have the right resources, and they're trained to do the right thing. Thank you, sir.
Keep coming back, don't be a stranger, okay?
How often do you meet?
Every other Tuesday.
Every other Tuesday, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next person, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, staff, and neighbors. It is that time of year again. Vietnam Veterans of America, South Bay Chapter 53, is having our 25th Annual Scholarship Essay Program. And it is targeted towards seniors in high school at this point, so it's open to entries from anyone who is a senior in high school in the South Bay. And we are giving up to five $1,000 cash scholarships. So I have some of the flyers here, they've just been printed, so I have a limited number with them right now, but I believe there's one in the city website. I know one of our posters is posted on the window, right outside of the council chamber here, so anybody would be able to see it there. And essentially, what the students need to do is interview a Vietnam veteran, and there are some topics that we suggest that they cover one of those topics, but basically, we want them to hear the story of somebody's service in Vietnam. And we also want them to attach their, their brag sheet, a little bit about their school and community activities, et cetera. And again, there is a hard deadline on this, and this year, the hard deadline is 11:59 PM on Monday, April 13th, 2020. These flyers and posters are being delivered to all of the high schools in the area, so you can talk to your guidance counselor there, but I wanted the cities and the residents to know that this is available, $1,000 cash, this is the 25th year that we've been doing it. Again, the flyers are here, you can see me if you need one right now, or you can see it on, on the window over here, and there's also one at the memorial center. Let's get some winners from Hawthorne this year. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm back, Valentin Hernandez, resident of Hawthorne for the last 10 years. And I'm going to be very brief, just to second the lady that was talking about the short-term rentals. Regarding the 90 days limit for the vacation, vacation rentals, I totally agree with her, and I hope you reconsidered that. I don't know where the 90 days came from, or what were, what was, you know, trying to be achieved by limited 90 days for the vacation rentals. I guess include vacation rentals with the rest of the other units that are going to be allowed, and eventually, if there's any issues with those particular properties, maybe make some changes. But as for now, it would be very, very helpful for a host who have a vacation rental property, it would really be beneficial for us, so we won't be left out of the, out of the pool, pretty much. So, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I'll declare oral communications close ordered. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have five items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item 6, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting of September 24th, 2019, the September 10th minutes have been pulled. Item 7, approval of way of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 8, city treasury requests approval of the warrants. Item 12, resolution number 8157, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending and updating administrative citation schedule for various violations of the Hawthorne Municipal Code. Item 13, resolution number 8167, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the destruction of parking citation records pursuant to Government Code 34090, and resolution number 7170 for adoption.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item 9?
Now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for local street improvement project 2020. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication filed. There were six bids received, all were accompanied by bidder's bond. The prices are as follows. Shawanen, $3,56,606.04. Hardy and Harper, $3,977,000. Sully Miller Contracting, $4,179,000. Excel Paving Company, $3,853,526.54. Sequel Contractors Inc., $3,422,336.70. All American Asphalt, $4,118,626.10.
I make a motion that the bid be referred to staff for study and recommendation?
Second.
Please vote.
Who is the second? Cool. The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Item 10?
Now is the time and place to declare, declare publicly received sealed bids for street inlet improvement Phase 2 project, Project 20-07. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication filed. There were three bids received, all were accompanied by bidder's bonds. The prices are as follows. G2 Construction, $546,777. United Stormwater, $397,236. BioClean Environmental, $461,251.
I make a motion that this bid, these bids be referred to study for, to staff for study and recommendation?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
14.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing for Housing Authority 5-Year Plan for 2020 through 2024, fiscal year and annual plan for 2020-21 fiscal year. Recommended motion, introduce an open public hearing for the draft 5-year plan and draft annual plan for the Section 8 program.
Is there anybody who wishes to speak from the public on this item? If not, I'll declare oral, oral communications for this item close ordered. 16, or item 17, please.
Number 2196, second reading. The ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.80, Airport Rules and Regulations of the Hawthorne Municipal Code Regarding Events at the Hawthorne Municipal Airport.
I'd like to discuss.
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to say that I think that this is a really good ordinance. I do support it. It's a great benefit to the airport and the city, because it promotes economic activity at the airport, but it also reduces the possibility of unauthorized entry, so it promotes safety through the written security plan, and I really, I do applaud the, the drafters for, for thinking of this. I think it was very well drafted, and I, I also appreciate the whole harmless clause and indemnity agreement, which will protect the city. So I fully support this. And I, I move to that it be approved.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council members voting yes.
18.
Number 2198, first reading. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, permitting and regulating short-term rentals in the City of Hawthorne by amending various provisions of Title 17, and adding a new chapter, 17.74, short-term rental permits to Title 17 zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code for introduction.
Anybody would like to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Okay.
Can we have some discussion on it? I know you, it's just an introduction, but can we discuss it or not?
Mr. City Attorney, would it be appropriate to, to discuss?
Appropriate to discuss it now?
Yes, perfect.
Go ahead, ma'am.
So there were a couple of things that I, I wanted to address. I'm concerned about the unhosted stay category. I don't actually see a benefit to the city, and I'm concerned that it will bring transients into the area. So it seems very loose, the host is left to make his or own conditions, and I'm, I'm, I want to ask Greg if he would come up and explain how this would work. I understand that it's a home-sharing activity whereby the host remains off-site during the guest's stay, but it seems like it's very, very loose, it doesn't have any limitations, and I'm concerned that it will promote transients into the area, and there won't be very many controls, especially since the host won't be there.
Okay, good afternoon, good evening, mayor, members of the council. To answer a question, councilwoman, so under the definition of short-term rentals, it consists of three types, you have unhosted, hosted, and then the vacation rentals. Your question was in regards to the unhosted?
I also have a question about vacation rentals, but we'll start with the unhosted.
Okay, so unhosted rentals, short-term rentals, and, and this doesn't include vacation rentals, are only given permits to those who have that location as their primary residence. So whether it's a single-family residence, duplex, triplex, or quadplex, that needs to be the primary resident of the person who's applying for the permit. An unhosted stay, therefore, would be, for example, the primary resident leaving for vacation, maybe for a month, out of town, and while they're out of town, that they're leasing their permitted short-term rental unit, but there, it is still their primary residence, and they therefore need to live there nine months out of the year, by our definition.
But they're, but we're sort of leaving it to them, who they rent to, and what their, what the conditions are of the rental, isn't that correct?
Yes, so it's up to the permittee to allow who they're going to rent, short-term rental their unit to. We don't, I guess, vet each applicant for each rental that's permitted out there.
But we could, couldn't we? Could we not have a condition put on those rentals?
That's something that staff would need to look at. And, for example, if you're referring to the comment that was made earlier that somehow we put the onus on the permitee to go through a vetting process of each, I guess, approved applicant that they're going to have. That wasn't something the planning commission had considered at the time.
Okay. But we could do that, is that correct?
I would say that we could definitely look into it and research that.
Okay. And then the other thing is on vacation rentals. So... And I guess the question is pretty similar because someone raised the issue of a vacation rental lease and eliminating the limit of 90 days and also having a vacation rental lease so as to bring in more experienced people, more experienced hosts who would do this. So what is your thinking about that?
The planning commission's reasoning behind limiting it to 90 days was actually to somewhat limit the professional leasing of units within the cities. They wanted to maintain that it was more for the residents of the city as a means of acquiring additional income. And so therefore, the limitation of 90 days was to prevent just that.
Okay.
The chair?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
What does all this stuff mean? NA?
Greg, it's for you.
Oh, for you, young man. Don't go away. You know, I read it, and I feel that we've finally got something rolling in this area. I think it's, you know, we can take the bugs out of it as we go along. And if we see something that's working or not working, we can address that. So I'm okay with all that. But as I'm reading this, and I get to that section two that has NA all over the place, what are you trying to say there, if you wouldn't mind?
So in the ordinance, what that's referring to is an existing table matrix within our municipal code.
You're going to have to slow that down a little bit.
So the ordinance is referring to adding an additional, I guess, row to an existing table that's already in the municipal code. And so what's missing, unless you refer back to the municipal code, was the headings to what those not applicables refer to. So for example, the first NA column would be for minimum lot size. The second one would be minimum lot width. The third would be minimum lot depth, minimum front setback, and so forth. Things regarding the physical topography of that particular site. They're not applicable to short-term renting because there's no construction or development of a new residential unit. The unit had already met those requirements in itself. So it's not a requirement as to short-term rental that they're on a minimum lot size or that the setbacks are to standard. Those have already been, I guess, vetted when that particular dwelling unit was built.
Maybe that makes perfect sense to you. And I would give you that much, you know? Is it just me? Because I don't understand what they're trying to... You guys do, okay?
Yeah.
No, it's a good question. If I may add something?
You guys are making me feel like I'm the only one.
No, my question's a coming. It's a perfect question. So as Greg was trying to explain, unfortunately, you are absolutely right, Councilmember Taida. We can, when we bring it back, the second reading, we need to add those headings. So these tables, the headings are missing on these tables. So that's why we couldn't know what is not applicable. So as Greg was explaining, there are certain requirements. The city is relaxing those requirements, making them not applicable, and therefore allowing short-term rental. So hopefully, next time, we add those headings.
Yeah. I had a friend of mine, he's from Missouri, and he'd say, "You know, we like to lay the hay down low where the cows can reach it," you know? And that's one of my favorite sayings because I like to implement that whenever possible, you know? But thank you.
Okay, Greg, don't go away. I'm next, right?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, go back to the question about these 90 days, right? The vacation rental. Because when they begin talking about leases, automatically, that it's not a short-term rental, correct?
I guess that's their choice of words of leasing, but they are renting for a maximum period of time.
From 30 to 90 days.
Well, we allow up to 30 consecutive days. For a vacation rental, they would only be allowed to do a total of 90 days for an entire calendar year.
Correct. Because then, if they want us to extend these 90 days, so practically, it would not become under short-term rental. So there would just be a regular lease that they will create with somebody for six months or to 12 months or whatever, correct?
They would still fall under the maximum 30 consecutive days, but they could then have, in theory, if you had no limit on it, you could have 12 potential rentals consecutively at 30 days each for the entire 12-month period.
People.
Right.
Not the same, not the same family or the same individual.
Correct.
So because what I'm understanding is, the way they're putting it, is like they want to do more than 90 days on the same family or the same individual. But that is not, we don't want that to happen. If they can do it, they can do it 12, you know, every month. They can rent it to somebody that's coming from, say, Germany, and then somebody come from Yugoslavia, whatever. But even Yugoslavia doesn't exist anymore. But, you know, so that type of thing, right?
Correct.
Okay. So now, also, okay, so that's clarified. My next question, because, you know, there was a lot of question during the planning commission meeting, especially for the audience. Okay, so we went down for that $1 million liability insurance that the A R and B provide, correct? Now, my next question is, because they're going to, short-term renting these places, are we going to be able to ask them also for that homeowner insurance that have fire and theft and kind, that protect if there is a fire or there is a robbery?
I, you know, I want to defer to someone in regards to those requirements.
Thank you, Greg.
This was a pretty big, large undertaking we took. So there's a lot of different people working on this.
Hi, Maria.
Requesting, it covers all of that. That's to protect property and life, et cetera. And it mimics what Airbnb and the hosting platforms are requiring as well.
All right, that's good. Good to know. So my next question is on the same line as Ms. Valentin about, are we going to send our code enforcement to inspect the units that they're going to be short-term rented before we issue a permit?
Many of the requirements in the ordinance are what we call self-certification. So they're signing an affidavit that they have the proper carbon monoxide, fire notification, things of that nature, already installed. You know, code enforcement will be notified of all of these so that they can enforce the regulations, especially in regards to parking.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Or you could go on the website itself, Airbnb, and see how many people are advertising for Hawthorne, and cross-check with whatever applications and permits you have, and have our code enforcement visit them.
Yes, and they've actually been doing that already and listing which ones.
That's the big problem. That's ultimately the big problem. People not being official, people wanting to do things without acting like businesses, but not wanting to pay their fair share as businesses. Go ahead.
I have a go-back please. I want to go back to the unhosted stay. It continues to bother me because I don't see a real value to the city in it. As a matter of fact, it troubles me. It seems to me that I see the disintegration of the community because you've got people coming in from, at all times. The host is gone. The host doesn't really know who's there. I mean, they vaguely know who's there because they've allowed the place to be rented out, which brings me to the other point about having some kind of lease. But they don't really know what's going on in the place. And so it becomes a magnet in my mind for all sorts of activities that the city might not want and the neighbors might not want. And if you've got a lot of people doing it, it seems to me you're actually... I just see the community declining and that the residential quality and character of the community declining as a result of something like this. So I would like to see that category eliminated, and I don't really see a value to it.
I'd like to respond to that.
Okay.
I think by the mere nature, the fact that we have high rental units, apartments, to begin with, and the high turnover that we see within those, I think if we put these in this, these would be joining that same category, you know? I mean, there's no distinction. We already have something in place that's not going away. It's a lot of apartment units that have a lot of high turnover. So if we want to add to that whole situation with this, you're right. We would be adding to the whole situation. If we want to, you know, hold back on this, then that's the council's choice to be able to refrain from that. But we've already experienced it, and all you have to do is go to certain sections of the community.
Well, but then now you're going to put it in the R1 zones as well. You're going to put it in the single-family residential zones as well. So you're going to have that high turnover all over the city.
And, yeah. We want to, some of our residents want to make some extra money. But exactly, the concern would be those professionals that are just doing this year-round and don't live here and disregard for the community.
Right.
I don't have no more question for you, Greg. But this is just a statement because we receive, at least I've received, a lot of emails, at least six, from different people saying that, please do not, you know, eliminate or vote against the short-term rental. We are not here to eliminate anything. We're trying to figure it out, how we can do it based on our rules and regulation, and to facilitate those people that want to do it to have guidelines. And we will have the procedure how to do it. So just what we're trying, you have to understand, we have to try to protect our community, to protect our business, and at the same time, we understand your need for additional revenue because, you know, sometimes life is hard and you need additional incomes to pay your mortgage or to put food on the table. So that is where I direct staff to come up with a good ordinance for us to be able to say, the city is working with those who would like to do A and B on a good way, but just regulated by the city, not just for everybody to go and do whatever they want. Okay? Because we want quality product, like you want people in your house that is good people. They are, you know, people that are not going to damage your house or your apartment, not apartment, but your house. And then you know how to vet those people, to protect your community because you're going to live there. You, the one, is going to be there, you know, 24/7 for years to come. So you are to protect your investment. So we want to help you to do that. So don't spread rumors out there that the city Hawthorne is trying to eliminate short-term rentals because that's not the case.
So I'd like to add to that. Exactly. I mean, look, people running around, going to neighborhood associations, flailing their arms in the head, "Oh, my God, oh, my God, what's going on?" But no, of course not. We just need to be fair. The reality is, the city of Lawndale and Gardena prohibit short-term rentals, prohibit. They're not even going to look at it. City of Manhattan Beach prohibits it as well. Redondo Beach and Carson prohibit it. Hermosa Beach has a pilot program. They're not fully convinced. And maybe Torrance, El Segundo, and Englewood are ones that are in the process of kind of doing the same thing we're doing. So in the process of permitting, nobody has had a program with regards to short-term rental. Doesn't mean we're not open to it. Okay? So please, you know, like he says, let's not like put out misinformation out there. We're here tackling an issue that if we were in one of these other cities, you would have no chance. You'd be shut down. But also, I really strongly believe that it's not the city's responsibility to go vet these homes and vet the people that they're renting to. The big argument that's being made by some of the residents who are here asking for us to allow for these things to stay open, the short-term rentals, the argument they're making is that the Airbnb system and the other systems are good systems that they ensure quality to begin with. So that's what they're saying. If it doesn't work, well, it's not a responsibility, ma'am. Okay? Because we're not in the business of doing short-term rentals. So if it doesn't work, and if it's not a good system that vets the residents out on our own, I suggest that we do this for one year and see how this works out. And if this becomes problematic for our community in our R1 zone, in our residential zone, then we'll pull it. But we don't have any experience making this official with the permitting process. We just need to see how it works. Does anybody have any feedback?
I agree. I think it should be on a limited basis. So I would support a pilot program.
I don't see any problem with that. Maybe a year, maybe make it 18 months, or, you know, give it a little time to, so you could have the nightmare scenarios or not. And, you know... But I think it's forward-thinking to try.
Yeah.
I don't think that we should join those that say, absolutely not. I think that by and large, if I'm a resident and I'm given an opportunity and I have an opportunity to make an extra, you know, $5,000 a year, that's a lot of money. And I would like to have a shot at that. So I don't see any problem with it. And then if it becomes a problem, you can always...
Pull back?
Pull back.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
You have to understand, you know, this is 21st century, and A R and B now have grown potentially all over the world. So I do agree with Mike here, maybe go to a pilot project 18 months to give it a little bit of time to have much more statistics for us to analyze and see the pros and cons. But at the same time, it's like I said, believe it or not, I was willing to vote yes basis on the recommendation from the planning department, from the planning commission, and also from our staff because they have done, I think, more than six months, right? They spend to come up with these ordinance, and they had, like, I think, four public hearings at the planning department? Not planning department, the planning commission. So people did, came and voiced their voices, and they were... I have to tell you, our planning commissioners was very thoughtful, very knowledgeable, and they did a lot, because I attend those meetings all the time for this. And they asked, you know, constructive questions, and staff went back and brought the feedback, and even they listened to the residents that wanted to do this. They went back and accommodated a lot of things that was asked by the residents and also basis on our own ordinance that we have in the past and for the short-term rental. So I have to say, you know, this was well thought, very, very well done, and I commend, you know, the planning department to bring it. And like I said, you know, I was ready for next time, the next meeting, to vote yes on this, on this with some amendment that I was going to suggest. But I agree with Mike that we can go ahead and maybe the city attorney could advise us what the next step for this 18-month pilot project.
18 months as opposed to a year that I originally suggested?
Why don't we hear from the guy that put it together?
Mayor, councilwoman?
Yeah, I would still like to see the unhosted stay category eliminated. I don't see a value in that. And I think that, I think if we're going to do it, it should be a hosted stay.
That's, what is the definition of hosted?
Unhosted.
Unhosted stay. Where the host is off premises during the guest's stay.
That would, that would...
Go ahead, let's for the public's...
Well, the thing is, unhosted doesn't mean people have to leave there at least for nine months, right? So that's mean they're going on vacation for a month. So that's mean they're going on vacation for months or three months. So they would, you know, short-term lease the property to somebody, the house to a family that's coming from somewhere to live there for at least 90 days.
It doesn't say lease.
Well, you don't, we don't want to say lease, because when it comes down to lease, it's complicated. It's, so that's the, the idea is, if you're going to, let's say you're going to spend three months in Europe, like in my case, sometimes I go to Africa and spend three months, right? Then I could rent my house for three months. But I'm not there because I'm in Africa.
Right.
That's what is unhosted mean.
Right, I understand that.
So...
A quick question. What's the average charge for Airbnb night here in the city of Hawthorne?
Oh, Lucy might ask that.
I don't, I don't have that answer.
What is it?
About a hundred.
A hundred?
Hundred dollars.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, well, you know, if we're going to do a pilot program, we should see how it works and just implement it without, yeah, they, we've been, we've been trying to get something on the books for this for quite some time. And, you know, good people can disagree. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not...
No, this is a good conversation.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think that if, you know, if it doesn't work, we can always yank it and we can always pull it and we could always scrap it. If some of it is creating a problem, we can always change that. But if it's not creating a problem, you know, give it 18 months and see what happens. And I don't know what you feel, you're the main architect here. You think that a trial run is not, is okay, or what?
If that's the council's desire, that's something staff can implement.
Very good, Greg. That's what I'm asking.
Let Russell say something about it, please.
There's no reason for a trial program. You have the ability to repeal the ordinance. So in 18 months, if you don't like it, we repeal it or amend it to your liking.
Then let's give it ourselves 18 months, note that in the record.
And even after, even after six months, if there is a problem with the ordinance, we can amend it then as well, rather than wait 18 months.
Look, the combination of unhosted, look, the combination of unhosted state, we're trying to stick to the spirit of this Airbnb, where people who live here are renting this thing. So let's not BS this thing. People who want to be, have an unhosted, unlimited pass a night, what they want to do is come in, charge a hundred dollars a day, about, maximum probably, if they could rent it every single day, $36,500, while rent doesn't even, rent for a regular unit doesn't even approach that. All it is is a money-making thing. That goes away from the spirit of the Airbnb, where people are trying to make some extra money on the side. So people who are trying to come over here and, people probably don't even live here in the city are trying to advocate for that, for that element. But we want to support our residents, like Lucy and a friend over here, Valentine, who want to make some extra money for something that they live in, they might have a unit there, hey, rent this out for a few days, or they're going to be stepping outside of their home on vacation. And next, stick to the true spirit of the Airbnb concept, which is that, not just like a professional thing, money-making thing, which is going to add and destroy the, it's going to bring different people riffraff that we don't even know about.
So in other words, if you've got a duplex and you live in Manhattan Beach and you want to take that duplex and you want to use that as an Airbnb, you wouldn't be able to do that.
Oh, it's prohibited.
You cannot do that. You have to live in that premise.
Oh, no, it's prohibited use.
Yeah, it is prohibited.
Whether they're advertising Airbnb, an Airbnb and letting that happen, they're subject to being shut down and penalized by the city.
Okay.
It's not, it's not one of those, it's one of them.
So, okay, all right.
So we support our residents that have a sensible approach to this and are doing this for the right reasons.
We're going to keep the 90 days. I'm not changing it.
Okay, make a motion.
No, 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 you cannot.
It's already been introduced, folks?
It's introduced, next, next meeting.
Okay.
We will monitor the situation, see how it goes, and then we'll just, we listen to the community. Our planning commission just went over this ad nauseam, and our city attorney and our planning director, I mean, what else do we want?
Through the chair, through the chair.
Just I think we should bring it back. You're saying, are we talking about 18 months, 18 months revisiting it?
We could just, well...
Or 18?
Through the chair, yeah. That's what Russell said. So we can, let's say the next meeting, we can pass it, and then anytime that we see a problem, we can rescind the ordinance. So Greg, go ahead.
Who is going to be monitoring to see if there's a problem? That's what you, when you say anytime we see a problem, who's going to see if there's a problem?
They'll come out.
Okay.
Greg, I did want to make a clarification on the Councilman Toledo's comment about someone living outside of the city owning a duplex and potentially short-term renting the unit. That would be considered what Councilwoman Valentine mentioned, a vacation rental. So they would be able to do that up to 90 days a year, because they're not a resident of that duplex. So if, and so at this time, the ordinance allows for that, but no more than 90 days a year.
But that particular individual couldn't do it on a daily basis like what we're talking about.
90 days, and we find, if we find out it's past those 90 days, that's it, boom.
If we find out it's less than 90 days, boom too?
Oh, no, no, that would be okay. Less than 90 days is fine. It's up to 90 days. And for those of you who came here tonight, thank you for coming, because I know you came here for this ordinance. So it is because the mayor here that we have to introduce it in one meeting and then vote to the next meeting, okay? So tonight, we will not be voting on this until, we'll be voting on March 10th. Right, Russell? All right, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, your consensus under?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have items 20 through 24 for your approval tonight.
I move?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council members voting yes.
Mr. City Attorney?
I have one item, item number 26.
I move?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item 28 has been pulled. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on a close, well, I'm going to move the, do we have the closed session? All right. If we can kind of go through brief conclusions from our elected officials, Mr. City Treasurer, Mr. Patterson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to thank the community for coming out, participating in the process, letting your voices be heard. I want to thank Ms. Abernathy for visiting us once again, and she's done just a spectacular job of just sharing her account through the civil rights movement. You know, it reminds me of some of the stories my mom told me. She grew up, my mom's from Birmingham, Alabama, and went to segregated schools and had to sit in the back of the bus and all that stuff. So it's just, you know, I just really appreciate her being here. And I want to just join in on part of her message, which is, let's make sure we vote, let's make sure we talk to our friends, our family, our neighbors. And we have election next week. You know, however you want to vote, I would appreciate it if you did vote. Thank you.
Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, I just have a few things. So thanks for everyone that's here tonight and watching at home. So yes, as Mr. Patterson shared, please go vote. So all locations are open for, that were open for 11 days, they're all set up and welcoming voters. As of yesterday, we had 60,000 people across LA County vote. We have two voting Hawthorne locations currently open, one is next door at the Hawthorne Library, the second's at Dana Middle School in Holly Glen. Starting this Saturday, we'll have three additional locations at the Memorial Center, Sentinel Bible Church, and the American Legion Post 314. To find locations, simply go to LAVote.net. Again, it's LAVote.net. All locations will be open from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, except on March 3rd, when they will extend their hours to 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So there's plenty of time for everybody to vote. If you're looking for election resources to learn about the candidates or propositions/messures, either look for our postings on Nextdoor, Facebook, or our City Clerk's website. And to our wonderful director sitting back there, who are here tonight, please encourage your staff to vote this week, because the traffic will be a lot higher this coming Monday and Tuesday, especially the directors that have their staff here, because it's literally a two-minute walk. So they can go enjoy some nice weather and go vote. And that is all. Thank you again to everyone that's here tonight. Happy Black History Month and happy Pancake Day. My son Pablo loves pancakes, so we definitely celebrate Pancake Day.
Mr. City Clerk?
Where's my pancake then?
I'll bring, I have some in the back.
All right. A question for the City Clerk. I know this, your office is not responsible for this, you know, I'm going to go, but I haven't received my ballot statement, my sample ballot.
You should have received it by now. So if you didn't, you should have contacted your City Clerk.
Well, that's why I'm contacting you now.
Not today, but probably as soon as you get...
Oh, wait a minute, remember?
Just like Ms. Councilmember Valentine, she didn't receive hers. At the time, she contacted me, made sure she was taken care of.
What's going on here? Oh, my God, what's going on, man?
But everybody here should have received their ballot by now. So if you didn't, you could still go vote. So anybody can go vote, you know, you're a registered voter, so you don't need your ballot to go ahead and vote. And mail, to register to mail, to vote by mail, actually that was, today was the final day. So that's actually passed. But definitely, if you haven't received your ballot, your name will still be at any polling place. So definitely go ahead and vote. Don't use that as an excuse to not vote, Mr. Mayor.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so I received, you know, made the ballot mail by, you know, mailing, right? And then somebody else received the same ballot, but they were different.
What do you mean, received the same?
Like, the candidates, my ballots, the candidates was in a different order.
Yeah.
Much better organized than the other ballot that this gentleman showed me. It was, it was completely different. It was two different ballots, and then we would live in the same area.
Yeah.
So it was like a discrepancy over there on those two ballots.
So that I've never heard of before, but again, contact me, probably prior to their council meeting, and we can take care of these things. Sorry that everyone has to stay here longer, because our council members are bringing things up now.
What's going on?
But it's kind of suspicious.
Again, you guys all know my number, you know where I'm at. Please contact me. We can make these things happen.
Hostility there.
We want to give you some time.
As a counselor by profession, communication's key.
It's not good on its toes.
And everything. You got blindsided, brother. So communicate.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Hey, well, let's communicate.
All right.
You know, I thought that presentation this evening was wonderful from Ms. Abernathy. I've, I've always liked the history of the, of the civil rights movement. And I think that, you know, I remember hearing about Medgar Evers, which was way before a lot of, you know, he was an early, an early civil rights activist. And then, you know, it just, it's amazing that the country was so ready to explode, and it never did. It never did. And that was because of Martin Luther King and nonviolence. And, and that was, you know, that was, that was a big accomplishment. And the other guy that had a similar situation, and he chose nonviolence, was Mandela. He was another guy that had every justification, and he didn't go that route. And both of these guys looked at Gandhi for what Gandhi was able to accomplish, you know? And, and so I don't think that they, you know, I mean, they're given, you know, the credit that they deserve, but I, you know, it could have been, it could have gone the other way. And, but for a couple of people, it didn't go the other way. And I think that, you know, it was really good to see this, this lady come over here and really do a live history, because that's, the only way you get that kind of stuff is on the History Channel, or, you know, you don't get that in person like that anymore. They're all gone. And so, you know, that was nice. I really, I really enjoyed that. As far as the, the other stuff, I mean, we just roll along and see how it works, you know? But we had, we, that was a nice presentation. I'm really glad that she did that. That's it.
All right. Okay, Councilmember Hawat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first thank everyone for coming out. I want to thank Ms. Abernathy for coming out and giving her compelling side and story of what she went through with her father and Martin Luther King for civil rights movement. It was really moving, and to take some time to really look back at history and learn where we came from, in order to not repeat it, is just phenomenal. And the second thing and last, there's another family center here in Hawthorne, Richstone Family Center. I do some work with them. They're the ones that received the JetBlue Park that they kind of built in one day, and they just recently finished building out their, it's like a new kind of, not entertainment center, but a community center for the families there too. So Friday, this Friday on the 29th, they're having their annual gala at the Porsche dealership. They have heavy sponsors, but it's just nice to kind of see the amount of push and funding and grants and people working on these kind of issues. So if you want to look them up too, it's the Richstone Family Center. This Friday, they're having their gala at the South Bay Porsche dealership here in Hawthorne. It's a wonderful event. It's quite massive and it's impressive. But it shows you the love that some of these people are giving to that kind of community and helping out. Happy Black History for everyone here. That's it. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Olivia Valentine, please.
Thank you. And I would like to obviously state my thanks to Donzalay Abernathy. I think because of her acting skills, she's actually able to make the presentation come alive, so you actually, and dramatize it. It was, it was really so well done. But it was actually a history of the Voting Rights Act in a sense, and it's so interesting to go behind these statutes, which are kind of dry when you read them, to know exactly how they came about. And of course, the Voting Rights Act had a lot of amazing history behind it, and that's, and that, that whole movement in Selma, Alabama was part of it. So I thank her for crossing, helping us cross the Edmund Pettus Bridge again and bringing that history alive for us. Is there anything else? Oh, I do want to, I do want to bring up the South Bay Cities Council of Governments. This is on our website, I hope, at this point. And this is the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, the General Assembly, which will be given, it's called this year, "The Intersections of Mobility, Land Use, Technology, and Finance." It's always a wonderful educational day. They've got registrat, the registration begins at 8:30. The program is from 9:00 to 4:00 with free lunch, and they will be having great speakers who will talk about Liam Dillon, Kevin Hirai, Keith Kaufman, our former police officer, police lieutenant here, who's now the police chief of Redondo Beach, he'll be a speaker, John Kaisler, Lila Omura, Kristen Pauling. And it will be in Carson at the Juanita Melinder McDonald Carson Community Center, but you have to register in advance, and the registration is required by March 12th at southbaycities.org. But it is free for the day, and it's a wonderful experience. They've got speakers, they've got exhibits, and it's just a great educational experience. I do encourage everyone to go. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mayor Protem, Von Teto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I echo Ms. Valentine about the South Bay Cock, you know, annual assembly, because I attended last year, was very well attending. And again, we encourage not just the staff, but the residents, just go online and register and go there, because you learn a lot of stuff. Because the last time, they have the LA Times owner, that he's a scientist, you know how he's working with developed countries and even here in the United States, how to build the next generation, how to create these batteries that will save all the excess energy from solar and the wind. So, so it's very good to learn a lot of different stuff over there. So please go. To Mr. Haydarawat, you know that Richstone Family Center was my first job in Hawthorne? I worked, yeah, I worked for Richstone through the Hawthorne School District for almost four years. Yes, yeah.
Beautiful building.
Yeah. So, so yeah, I encourage everybody to go there. So thank you to bring it up. So thank you to bring it up. Again, thank you, Ms. Valentine, for Ms. Abernathy. You know, I think this is the third time that we see her presentation. And like you said, every time she comes, she dramatizes the situation. Because being there as a seven-year-old, uh, you know, it still gives you goosebumps, right? Goosebumps when she talks about her dad and Dr. Martin Luther King, what's going on, uh, on Selma and across that, the nation that time. And then it was beautiful for her to highlight that the civil rights struggle was not just African-American. It was, you know, the Jews, some Caucasian people came from different states to help that movement. So that is where Lyndon Johnson, you know, um, LBJ or whatever, had to sign that, you know, promote that bill. So thank you to bring all that alive right here in the city of Hawthorne. Uh, I just, again, I just want to say, uh, thank you for, for, uh, for the people that has been advocating for this short-term rental, because it's been a long six to eight months. They have gone to the planning commission meeting, and they have gone to, to different places, advocate for it. So we are with you. We have, we listen, and that's what we're here for, to deliver, uh, what our constituents would desire, but with safety and a health matter, right? So that is our job to make sure that you guys are going to do it well, and it will be a good thing for the city and for yourselves. So thank you for coming for that. Uh, I just want to mention that the, uh, the census, uh, 2020 is going to start in March. But I, I would recommend, if you receive something like this on the mail, don't fill out the form yet until March, uh, the 10th or the 12th. Uh, because we're going to have a presentation here on March 10th about how to fill out that form. And you're going to see that form that have 10 questionnaire for you to fill out. So don't do it yet, because we're not sure if this came from the census office or is it, or if it is a scam. So I will find out tomorrow. So I will, but I would recommend for you not to do it before March 12th. After the next council meeting, the representative from the census, the US Census will be here to show how to fill out that questionnaire. So do not, do nothing until March 12th. That is when the census will begin, from March 12th to April 1st, okay? So thank you for that. And again, I just want to remember everybody, and on behalf of Parks and Recs, Vaughn and Brenda, that April 4th, we're going to celebrate the Earth Day, and we're going to have the bounty breakfast, the fun run, the provisos fair, health fair, and a celebration of Earth Day. So April 4th, from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. And, Mr. Mayor, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all my colleagues on the dais and the city clerk and the city treasurer. Thank you. Um, so just want to remind you guys that this Thursday, um, February the 27th is the State of the City at the Mohawk Memorial Center, starting at 11 o'clock. So it's, the reception portion is going to be from 11 to 12. And the lunch and the State of the City will be taking place after 12:00 noon. Okay? So we hope to see you there. Um, we have one of our members of our, no more go-bags, right? Because you tend to do it like that. I'm, I'm going to just do it now, because you steal my thunder, man, at the end.
No more go-back.
And actually, this is not a, this is not a light topic right now. Uh, one of our residents here in the city of Hawthorne, Mr. Steve Braun, passed away. Um, he used to come with his, uh, wife a while back, but stopped coming since he started getting sick. Um, Mr. Steve Braun was born August 26, 1926. He passed away peacefully at his home here in Hawthorne, after a brief illness on February 15th, 2020. He was 93 years young and always willing to share a story or lend a hand. He was a proud World War II veteran. He was dedicated to his wife of almost seven years, his faith and his family, and his LA Dodgers. He was born to Adam and Mary Braun in Ipswich, South Dakota. So this is one of our transplats from South Dakota. And he was one of 11 children. He survived, survived by his wife Valera, his brother August, his children Gary, Ron, Roger, and Donna. He also leaves behind 10 grandchildren, 23 great-grandchildren, and three great-great-grandchildren. He moved to Hawthorne, California from South Dakota in 1949, and he married Valera in 1950. He worked for United Airlines and retired in 1989 after 40 years. He was a member of St. Joseph's Church in Hawthorne for seven years, as well as a life member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, where he served as the officer of the day and an honor guard captain. He was also a member of the American Legion, the Gardena Elks, and the local IAM union. He loved his LA Dodgers and relished in watching his grand and great-grandchildren play baseball from little league through college. He was a man that was willing to find things to fix and repair, and always ready to help out a neighbor in need. He's remembered for his bright smile and always willing to share a story. Maybe we can, maybe we can get, uh, the cameras to focus in on this. Our cameras are, uh, we have new cameras that can swivel around, so maybe you can focus in on the picture. The services will be Friday, February the 28th, um, at 10:30 at St. Joseph's Catholic Church. So if you're able to make it, please do so.
Could I see that?
Okay. So, let's see if the, I'll leave it up there for the camera to focus in on, so people can know who this is. And familiar face, if you don't know him by name. Okay? Is there anything further from our, uh, city council? Just, go ahead. Yes, go ahead, man.
I just wanted to ma, say a couple of words about, uh, Steve Braun. Just a great community person, someone who always came to our community events. And, um, someone who was always, you always saw him with that bright smile, and he always had some good words and very willing, just as the obituary said, very willing to help out whenever needed. So this is, this is the kind of, when we say this is Hawthorne is a city of good neighbors, he's one of those good neighbors we're talking about. So he will be missed.
Uh, Mr. Braun was a usher at church. So I go to St. Joseph's Church for Mass on Sundays, and he was always a, uh, usher there at the afternoon masses. So, I mean, I remember him from there and from his community activism. So over these last many years that we've been here in the city of Hawthorne, so, um, let's just.
I just wanted to address, uh, council member Motero's question. So I just don't want to alarm any of our neighbors. So the difference, I spoke to the county clerk, and they said that the reason why it's different, it's based off party preference. So based off party preference, your ballot might look different.
But they were both Democrat.
Okay. That, I'm just sharing with the. We can talk afterwards.
All right, folks. Um, is there anything further from, uh, council or staff? Anybody wishing to speak on our closed session item? If not, I declare oral communications closed, so ordered. Uh, we're going to be in recess for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Uh, this meeting is temporarily in recess.
The city council meeting is called to order. We have met in a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, the Labor...
The City Council Meeting is called to order. We have met in a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, the labor negotiator has been instructed.
Is that it? Is there any further action from council that needs to be taken on this? Okay, anything further from our council colleagues? If not, this meeting is adjourned.